Mr. Mudd, are we ready to begin the board meeting?
We are.
Thank you. The first thing on the agenda is a public hearing. This public hearing will be held by the Louisville Natural Gas Pollution Control Board. It's called order. It's held pursuant to KRS Chapter 77 and District Regulation. Notice of this hearing has been published pursuant to state law. This public hearing is being held also by video teleconference. Instructions on making written and oral statements by video teleconference have been distributed to everyone. Oral statements must be presented today. Statements should be, all statements should be concise. All statements will, will become part of the operating record. There is one board order amendment involving the NOx Rack Plant Plan for the LGNE Mill Creek Station to be reviewed today. Would the staff please present the amended board order involving the NOx Rack Plan for the LGNE Mill Creek Generation Station?
Thank you, Chairman Hilton. I'm Matt King. I'm the Industrial Permitting Manager here at APCD. LGNE has applied to construct a natural gas combined cycle electric generating unit at its Bill Creek Generating Station in southwest Jefferson County. The project includes the retirement of two coal generating units, units one and two at the facility. This will result in a significant improvement to the emissions profile of the facility, including a roughly 4,000 ton per year reduction in NOx, nitrogen oxide, 200 tons of particulate matter, roughly 800,000 tons of CO2. This NOx reduction is part of, is of particular importance as ozone in Louisville is most affected by NOx. VOC is the other precursor to ozone, and this project will increase that, but only by about 11 tons. A draft permit for the entire project will be made available for public comment in the near future. The matter before the board today is the VOC NOx Rack. It's a requirement under District Regulation 6.42. It requires any major source of VOC or NOx to apply reasonably available control technology. This board order will continue the previous plan for the existing units that will remain in service and will set new conditions for the proposed emission units. The NOx Rack for the new unit, the combined cycle gas turbine, which is unit number five, is a limit of 15 parts per million at 15% oxygen on a 30-day rolling average. That limit is also found in the federal new source performance standard for this type of turbine. The facility proposes to use selective catalytic reduction, sometimes they'll go to say SCR, to reduce the NOx. And then compliance will be verified with continuous emission monitoring system. They're also applying to install a support boiler for the project as well as a gas preheater. The proposed rack for those is 0.04 pounds per million BTU, and those will utilize low NOx burners. As a frame of reference, the limits on the previous units were about an order of magnitude greater than that. So we're coming in an order of magnitude lower than those racks that were set about 20 years ago. The VOC rack for the new unit five is a VOC limit of two parts per million and a limit on formaldehyde of 91 parts per million. Oxidation catalysts will be utilized. Testing will be conducted to determine compliance. If, after two successful compliant tests, the testing would be required every two years. The support boiler and fuel gas heater will be required to utilize good combustion and operation practices to reduce VOC, and that would include inspections and cleaning as well as optimizing fuel to air ratios for complete combustion. We did receive several comments during the written comment period. The district has provided our responses to those comments to the board. We've also received one written comment yesterday, which was after the comment period, but we provided that to you guys. We did not provide a written response for timeliness, but we will certainly make that available to you. One thing that seemed common in the comments was a mention of the Metro Council's resolution for 100% clean energy, which is an important part of Louisville's energy policy, but it's not binding on APCD or LGNE. And so this rack is, it required by our regulations for a project like this. So we bring to you this rack, and the district recommends the board adopt. The agreement is drafted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Mudd, has a representative of LGNE registered to make a statement this morning?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Has any member of the public registered to make a statement this morning?
I have two that have registered to make a comment at the public hearing so far, so do we take those?
Yep.
First is Danica Novorodov.
Sorry.
Novorodov ODOT.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just did.
Come onto the podium, that'd be awesome.
Thank you. When you speak before the board, this is our owl. Okay, it's pretty sensitive, but he'll direct your voice that direction if any lightning catches. Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Danica Novorodov, and thank you very much for hearing my comment. I'm a Louisville resident and is of code of 40205. And so last year, the American Lung Association ranked Louisville poorly for harmful air pollution and reported that the air quality in Louisville has actually been getting alarmingly worse in the last few years. Ozone and particle pollution have become more and more of a risk for everyone, but especially for children and elderly folks. And as someone who lives here in Louisville with my aging parents and my two young children, this is really a grave concern for me. I am also, of course, concerned for my own health, as I hope to live in the city for a long time. These are the kinds of pollution that can cause lung cancer and asthma attacks, and I want to live in a city where I can feel like I can provide a safe and healthy environment for my family. I'm also aware that bad air quality is disproportionately experienced by people of color. And I believe it's unfair and unjust to allow our neighbors in areas such as West Louisville to suffer the health effects of worsening air quality and the diseases and the earlier death rates that come with that pollution. So this means that we need to lower emissions and pollution levels and not allow more. Looking at the big picture, we just, we can't afford to invest in any new fossil fuel, polluting fossil fuel infrastructure. Time for fossil fuel expansion is over. We're in the middle of a climate catastrophe in which species are dying off at unprecedented rates, and people's lives are at risk all over the world, including in Kentucky due to human-caused environmental damage. So adding more pollution and more fossil fuel burning plants to our current situation is throwing both literal and figurative fuel in the fire of this disaster. And as mentioned, if Louisville Metro is going to meet our desperately needed goal of 100% clean energy by 2040, we have to say no to more air pollution and more fossil fuel plants. The time to move to renewable energy is now slash a long time ago. So thank you very much for hearing my comments.
Thank you very much.
Second commenter that is registered is Wallace McMillan.
Hi, I'm Wallace McMillan. As I had, it's a 24 to remove to Louisville. And I am speaking on behalf of Louisville Metro Alliance, Louisville. Set real initials. Yeah, and I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed board order and rack plan for LGNE's Mill Creek Generating Station. Louisville Metro Government has made clear that it wants to move away from burning fossil fuels, especially electricity generation. The proposed NOx Rack Plan Board Order creates legal approval for an undesirable large new fossil fuel burning infrastructure facility, which is in opposition to the policies of ending greenhouse gas emissions enacted by Louisville Metro Government. The new natural gas-fired unit is contrary to city policy as stated in Metro Council Resolution R12-19 and the Mayor's Executive Order 2020-06. Voting from Metro Council Resolution, whereas there is no credible path to a safe climate that includes continued long-term combustion fossil fuels and the proliferation of new fossil fuel infrastructure. Therefore, Metro Council supports 100% cleaner and Louisville energy goal Metro Government operations by 2030, 100% clean energy goal for all Metro Government operations by 2035, and 100% clean energy goal community-wide by 2040. This was passed on February 6, 2020. And then voting from the Mayor's Executive Order thereafter supporting those said goals, which was promulgated in October 2022. Whereas Louisville Metro Government's Office of Advanced Planning and Sustainability has created a greenhouse gas emissions reduction plan and climate adaption plan to outline key implementation strategies. Whereas Louisville commits to achieving net zero greenhouse gas emissions community-wide by 2040 in accordance with science-based targets. I, as Mayor of Louisville Jefferson County Metro Government, hereby declare the establishment science-based greenhouse gas reduction target for Louisville. I hereby order and direct the following. All Metro Government agencies and departments shall identify necessary investments or policy changes, if any, to enable the achievement of a science-based greenhouse gas emissions reduction target. Building the new NGCC gas-fired power plant, therefore contrary to city policy, and will be a large source of greenhouse gas emissions lasting long past the city's goal of net zero emissions by 2040. The Louisville APCD is an agency functioning in Jefferson County, and it should act in ways consistent with the policies of Louisville Metro Government. I therefore urge the APCD Board not to take the action passing today's proposal and to defer any future approvals of such fossil fuel plants. And going off my script, I heard Mr. King say that APCD's regulations require approval even though it goes against the city policy. And I would suggest to you, I think, therefore APCD should change its regulations to go along with the policies of the city. This is concluded by saying Jefferson County needs to be powered by clean renewable generation sources, and the APCD has the power to help make this happen, its regulatory actions. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your comments.
Oh, thank you, Wallace.
Mr. Mudd, are there any, one in the Edison Room, can we make a statement?
I was about to say, we had three additional people put in a slip for the regular board meeting, but, no, no. They put it in for the regular board meeting, but I wanted to double-check that that was what they meant to do rather than during this public hearing. So if you, okay, absolutely. So if you haven't been, you can prompt those in the room who wish to make a comment, you can make a comment.
You will make a comment?
Hello, I'm Kathy Hingo. I live on 1941 Payne Street here in Louisville. And I am here to tell you that while the, the order of the mayor may not be sufficient, that this is improperly before you because LGNE violated Kentucky Revised Statute 278.285 in two ways. They did not include any of this in the IRP, the Integrated Resource Plan, that is demanded as a good faith effort by the utility company. They deliberately withheld any discussion of it, and they violated Kentucky Revised Statutes requiring the Demand Side Management Committee be advised and included. And how do I know? I was on the Demand Side Management Committee as a representative of the NAACP, and repeated attempts, including in writing, to get more information from LGNE went unheard. So they violated the actual statute of Kentucky in how they generated this, this plan altogether. And why is that important? Because had the public, had the people you are supposed to protect, us, the citizens, been allowed the information and the notice of what they were planning, we may have come up with a better idea, not this idea. We could have a different proposal before us had the LGNE followed the law. You, under Regulation 1.01, Section 1.2, have the power to say no because nothing in these regulations is intended to allow any practice that violates any statute, ordinance, or regulation. So you can reject this as premature. You can send them back to the, to the initial start. Make them give an integrated resource plan that includes this. Make them, LGNE, get the public input to understand what the whole, the whole process of future energy generation will be. And we make, and also the Demand Side Management Committee that they're supposed to follow. And then we may be coming up with a much better plan than fossil fuels for the next 50 years. And so you should exercise, and let me just say, they spit on Louisville when they did this. They said, we're not going to make, we're not going to allow Louisville government to know about our plans. We are not going to allow Louisville government who participates in the Demand Side Management to know about our plans. So their disrespect for the citizens and for, you represent the government here, is very clear. And you have solid ground to just say, this is premature, you didn't follow the rules, you should go back to the beginning. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. So I think there was another question. Anybody else?
Is it Ms. Christensen?
Hello, my name is Jean Christensen, and I live at 1465 South Second Street, Louisville, Kentucky. I wish to object to the construction of a natural gas power plant on financial grounds, reasoning that this objection would be better heard and understood than one based on environmental degradation or public health. Two observations. If we come to our senses and reckon with the chances, chances, changes we can see in the natural world, we would know that in the timeframe of climate change, any fossil-fueled energy producer, that is a natural gas power plant, will be obsolete in 10 or 15 years, leaving this community to deal with an expensive and unsightly stranded asset. All this trouble can be avoided by intelligent investment now. When legislation like HR 5744, the Carbon Dividend Trust Fund, or ONE-Locket, since there are other ones on the books, is enacted, each ton of fossil fuel will proceed, will cost $12 more each ton the first year, and $10 to $15 more each year thereafter. In other words, an increased amount that is designed to make the use of fossil fuels, natural gas among them, obsolete by 2050. This proposed gas-powered plant will be among the albatrosses left to spoil the view and drag on our economy. How much better and wiser to invest now in renewable energy? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I believe we've received for the public hearing.
Appreciate all your comments. Is there anybody else in the Edison Room who wish to make a statement? Are there any questions by board members?
Yeah, I have a question. I wonder whether LGNE, I don't want to know who I'm asking this to. I wish to represent here from LGNE, but to the point that we just heard, it may be possible to add carbon capture to the plant. The best time to do it would be for building, of course, but if the board could possibly reach out to LGNE and ask them that, if they have any contingency plans.
To some extent, some of this planning is and has been discussed at the Public Service Commission, which has the authority with respect to how LGNE builds its business for the future. Or correcting if I'm incorrect, that that has been an issue of concern raised with Public Service Commission?
It has, but with specific to whether or not, and the companies can speak to it more than I can. Based upon the record that's been filed at the PSC, is that there isn't any viable utility-scale carbon capture sequestration technology currently. So don't think that that particular retro, well, that particular technology would be considered as part of this, this unit. So.
There are requirements that have been under consideration at UFCPA for existing fossil fuel-fired facilities under Section 111D of the Clean Air Act. Those have not yet been defined ones. Correct on that, Matt?
Yes.
Those do speak to carbon capture and sequestration as options for existing facilities. But that is still under development.
We would be happy to forward that question on to LGNE to see if they would like to respond to you.
Right.
Yeah, that's what you're asking, yes.
Yeah, I think, I think the specific plan was, in terms of how the LGNE model impact on, on carbon constraint is that the capacity factor or the time that the combined side unit would be reduced by 50%, which would allow them to meet any sort of potential new carbon regulation that could be imposed as opposed to putting a technology to capture the carbon and store it. So company's modeling is that the operations of the, on the combined side would be reduced to 50% to not emit, or to, to reduce the level of CO2 emissions.
Forward that on to LGNE. Do you have any clarifications that you need before we do that?
And I just have one question for Mr. King. You had mentioned that this would reduce the NOx by 4,000 tons, 8,000 SO2. What about NOx SO2, and that's it?
Particulate matter by several hundred tons and then greenhouse gases by about 800,000 tons.
Okay.
The, again, this is the reasonably available control technology for VOC and rack is what we're looking for today. I would like to clarify, Mr. McMillan said that I had said it must be approved. There's no must there. I just don't have a regulation that tells me to deny, to not bring to you guys. But there's a lot of issues at play here within that full permit. If we propose a full permit for this construction project, which would include this rack and a lot of other stuff, we would address some of those other pollutants maybe a little more specifically. But yeah, this is planned, the Clean Air Act, you trigger more and more requirements if you have a significant increase to emission. Emissions, this plant won't have a significant increase, and because they have coupled it with the retirement of two older units, it will have a decrease, as you noted, so with the exception of VOCs, you know, that this is, this document is not approving that entire project, but the draft, the application for the entire project commits LGNE to removing those units. So as currently applied for, it's not just a new unit. It's a new unit with the retirement of two large units.
My next question, have to get, have to submit their emission inventory for this year or the last year?
Commission inventories are due each year in April.
And I, so what, what are the numbers for the data reported, LGNE, do you have those?
I can get you the specifics. I believe it's in the 7,000-ton range, something like that for NOx, particulate several hundred tons.
With respect to those criteria pollutant values that you're talking about, Matt is right. This is kind of a bifurcated process. This is not the entire permitting for the natural gas turbine letting take place in a comprehensive permit. But these are criteria pollutants that do add to the area's compliance with the National Ambient Air Quality Standards for ozone, which that nitrogen oxide or NOx is a precursor. We are currently in moderate nonattainment of that national federal ambient air quality standard. Okay.
Just as a follow-up to that question from Matt, from press, and from the public, it might be useful to know that reduction in NOx emissions that will result from replacing two coal, based on the same electrical output, is, what was that, 80,000 tons?
For the CO2?
I'm sorry, for the CO2.
Yeah, that was 800,000 tons.
800,000 tons, yeah. Could you give?
Which I said, those are scaled, you know, don't compare that to the criteria of, you know, CO2, so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, that's what I meant.
I'm not, I don't want to overstate that. It's, it's a good reduction, but it's not 800,000 tons of SO2 or NOx.
Yeah. What percentage reduction is that compared to what would have been emitted by the coal plants for the same electrical output?
I believe there are about 2 million tons of CO2 emitter currently. So it would drop it into the 1.2 million-ish range. Those are not exact numbers. I should have looked at my computer to give that to you. But again, this particular document, I understand these are big issues. Climate change is a very important issue. This particular document is to set a reasonable control strategy for VOC and NOx. But there are a lot of other issues around the project that are important to discuss as well. So I'm not trying to exclude those issues. Just want to make clear what this particular document. Yes, of course.
And for the NOx reduction, what, by what percentage of that?
I believe that's about a half, but very, yeah, and again, you know, these are past actions we're referring to have that credit. So it's not their, you know, redable potentials. Wasn't they really emit within the last five years? And then when those go away, that's the reduction. And the new facility will be having its own roughly 200 tons of NOx emissions. But all set, for lack of a better term, with those reductions.
Okay, thank you.
But.
Thanks, Matt.
Were any other questions from board members that only video conference?
I have a question. And I was trying to see if maybe it's already been addressed, but I know one of the, the general ideas is that the natural gases, burning is, is better or healthier than coal gas. But the emissions from natural gas, you know, we have to deal with those issues as well. Does LGNE speak at all about possible methane or methane leaks from natural gas emissions?
Not as part of this permit application, but I do believe that's part of the company's responsibility as they manage that gas distribution system.
Thank you, Candace. I'd like to thank everyone coming this morning and.
Chairman Hilton.
I do want to make sure that you prompt those online to have the opportunity to comment, erase their hand to comment, just in case. I don't think you've asked online, folks, if they would like to comment.
Anyone online who'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand, that's a feature that you hit star three, and you will be called upon if you want to make a comment or whatever.
I do not see any hands. Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that they.
Yeah, we give everybody a chance if they have a comment or suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So like I've said, this concludes the public hearing. Now we'll come back to this on the new business and we will vote on this proposed agreed board order, LG&E, under new business. I will now call the working meeting of the Global Natural Air Pollution Control Board to order. We are conducting the monthly meeting today by video teleconference. The first thing I want to do is have a roll call with board members that are present on this teleconference. When I call your name, please say here. Steve Sullivan, Chief Officer. Dr. Colbert.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. May, Chief Officer. Candace White.
Here.
Thank you. Marissa Neal.
Here.
Thank you. And Dr. Daniel Doris. Staff, okay. Mrs. Hamilton. Do we have any introductions this morning?
Not this month, but next.
Okay. Do we have any public recognitions this morning?
No, sir.
Thank you. We went down to the approval minutes, the public hearing and regular meeting minutes that was held September the 2nd were distributed electronically. Are there any questions or changes to the minutes by board members? Here and done, the public hearing and regular meeting minutes are adopted. Thank you very much. Rachel Mudd, has anyone registered to make a comment this morning?
Chairman Hilton, this morning Brian Bingham with the Metropolitan Sewer District has asked to speak to the board. Given the importance of MSD's operations to the city and their impact at the current time, I've asked Mr. Bingham to join us next month for a presentation to the full board
Okay.
on MSD's opportunities to reduce odors. But this morning they may have brief comments and recognition of our full agenda.
Thank you.
Mr. Bingham?
Members of the board, thank you all for allowing me to speak. And I look forward to next month giving you all more detailed presentation and update of what's going on. Obviously, we have some older issues going on in the community. And as the owner, operator of the, of the sewer system, extensive sewer system, we have a lot of responsibilities and we're also doing a lot of work. I just wanted to briefly touch on a few things to acknowledge the working relationship with the Air Pollution Control District, with our board order from you all that we do take this very seriously. We are putting a lot of resources into this. We have some things and we'll explain in more detail next month. But a lot of this is related to the weather conditions and the way the system was originally constructed. We do have projects that are ongoing and planned that will be making significant improvements. Unfortunately, some of those can't happen as fast as we would all like due to limitations as contractors and resources and other things. I'll go into that more. One thing I will share with you ahead of time, the second phase of work of Art Duval has been awarded. The contractor will be starting work out there. That has been one of the most notable locations of the issues. I also want, want to make you all aware that we, by asking for additional public comment, we may have inadvertently set in motion a series of things that have created some additional issues. We want to hear from anyone who has an issue at any time. We have staff that answer the phones 24/7/365. You can also reach us through online portals. We also get information from, from the city through 311 and through Smell My City app and other things. One thing that we've noticed though is people are starting to exaggerate certain things. And by that, I do not mean the owners. They are not exaggerating the owners. But we had one, for example, that, that came through the mayor's office where the person said they called us 25 times and we'd never responded. Well, our system, you cannot delete an entry from it. So if you call in, it's logged. They called us three times and we've responded three times and taken action three times. We've had others who have this belief that if you call us every single day, that'll move you up the list. No, what it's doing is taking resources and putting them to chasing phantoms. Once we've addressed it, it's not helping to go back out the second day and do the same thing again. But we're going to respond to everyone that calls us or everyone that reaches out to us in any way. So we're trying to get the message out to the public that please call us when there's a problem. Be as specific as you can and we'll be there as quickly as we can. We did change our operations when we went into the drier period. Typically, we haven't had forces that were in on weekends and evenings to handle these. We are now seven days, we have been seven days a week for the last few months with being able to respond to odors and we're usually two shifts a day. We do not have an overnight group. We will respond to the overnight, but we will not take action necessarily in the overnight. And that is something else we'll talk about at the next meeting because there is something that happens at night with the, the cooler denser air and the lack of wind. It kind of forces down and does seem to make the, the problem worse at night. We have put additional resources. We've brought contractors in. We're doing additional things. I'll go through all this in detail next month. But I did want to tell you all that we are taking this extremely seriously and we are working to try to respond to anyone who puts a request in. We try to get it responded to that very day and as quickly that day as possible. That's all I have today unless you all have any, any questions. I know you all have a very full agenda.
No questions. Any questions from board members? Thank you, thank you so much. Looking forward to, for your sending next month. Mr. Mudd, has anyone provided written comments this morning?
No.
Are there any members of the public in the Edison Room that wish to make a comment? If so, please raise your hand and you will be called upon. Yes.
On something different. I'm Kathy Hinko. I live at 1941 Payne Street here in Louisville. And I have a history of fair and affordable housing, which also includes, for instance, having served on the Starboard under Barbara Sexton Smith and a lot of interaction about both air quality as it has to do with fair and affordable housing. I hope that you don't get caught with your pants down again like you were 20 years ago and that you require a racial impact study for every permit and that you require LG&E to keep all its data on customers by census tract. We don't need to know them individually, but we need to be able to study census tracts to be able to see the impact of cancer, for instance, by census tract and other outcomes. And so you should demand a racial impact study. You should demand that LG&E keep information about the customers for research purposes by census tract so that you actually fulfill your other requirements, which is to not have discriminatory policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other members of the public that wish to make a brief comment on this video conference? Please raise your hand by video teleconference and you will be called upon. This is a feature you can find on the participant list or by pressing star three if joining the phone and you will be called upon.
I don't see any raised hands.
Okay.
Thank you.
This completes the public comment portion of the meeting. We have no unfinished business. Now we're back to new business. The district has recommended that the board adopt the amended board order involving the NOx RACT plans for LG&E Mill Creek Generation Station. I recommend, if you notice up here, we're missing three board members today. I recommend that we defer consideration as further until November. Can I get a, a motion from the board?
Still moved.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Good. We will defer consideration and disagree order until the November meeting. We missed three board members. And that'd give us a chance to really go over some of the comments and things. So we'll come back November. We have the full board and to see what everybody says. I think would be fair just to be honest up here. So appreciate that. No committee met during the month. Mrs. Hamilton, staffer.
Thank you, Chairman Hilton. So good morning, everyone. Rachel Hamilton, I'm the Director of the Global Metro Air Pollution Control District. This morning, I want to thank Matt Mudd for helping us with this, this morning's board meeting. The usual mission staff, Sherry Steiner and Andy Burton are off. Board Secretary Treasurer, Shaw King, is on her way to a National Association Clean Air Agencies meeting where she'll be presenting on our long care for cleaner air program. So Matt is wearing a number of hats this morning and we're grateful for his help. I'm especially pleased to share that next month I will have introductions. Right now, there we meet two. We have Lindsay Anderson, who has accepted a position as a compliance officer and returning APCD employer Melanie Brown, who will be joining us now as a Compliance Enforcement Coordinator, who is starting with us on Monday, the 23rd. There are also some additional candidates who are in the hiring process. We hope to see that process be completed before next month's meeting and I will be more than thrilled to introduce them to you at that time. It's been a busy month, as they all are. There's a lot of work that goes on, kind of like a duck. You see us on top of the water, but we're paddling furiously underneath. A lot of that work goes around our compliance with the National Ambient Air Quality Standards. With respect to ozone, we're currently in moderate. Have seen impacts both in terms of particulate matter and also in ozone from the Summers Canadian wildfires. So we are evaluating an exceptional demonstration for one or both of those pollutants. That is a large undertaking. We've got something that we have to acquire a contractor. It's very sophisticated in terms of that demonstration, farther you get from a fire, pretty far away. With respect to particulate matter, we have heard from US EPA that they will likely provide us with a newly revised and strengthened particulate matter standard later this fall, toward end of October, but it's kind of like having a baby. We're taking bets somewhere between Thanksgiving and Christmas. For those of you who've been around, it's not unusual to see EPA have large programmatic changes between December 23rd and December 31st. That's where I've got mine, somewhere around December 31st. So this month, we joined Chairman Hilton on September 30th and a fair number of folks here in the room at the West Jefferson County Community Task Force's Seventh Annual Environmental Justice Summit, when it was held at the University of Louisville. We went for breakfast, grew dinner, and it was a phenomenal day. I'm in particular very impressed in the number of students who joined us. It's good to see a lot of new faces joining into conversations. They had a whole day of informative panel discussions and presentations and the district was able to provide and share information about our own work. This month, presented to the Global Metro Board of Public Health at their request on APCD's role in emergency response. I'll be sharing some more information to the board in a presentation at the end of my report. But it was an awesome opportunity to see another board. They're a policy board as opposed to this board's action as regulatory board. And it's larger. I think it's some interesting questions. On Friday of last week, I joined a regulatory panel discussion with my counterpart from the Kentucky Division for Air Quality, Jason Sloan, the Executive Director of the Association for Air Pollution Control Agencies, or APA, and also the Kentucky Environment and Energy Cabinet's current Director of Enforcement and Plans, to talk about what's new in the air regulatory world. Sounds like a dry topic, but I'm happy to say that at the last minute, Sean Alp, who was the former Director of the Kentucky Division for Air Quality, stepped up to be our moderator. It turned out to be a pretty lively conversation, at least from my perspective. What was great about that particular gathering is that it was in person. They had so many people attend that they had to move into a larger space. And again, it was awesome to see new young folks coming into this practice. So Monday, Michelle and Bradley Coombs, APCD's Environmental Coordinator, hosted a workshop on Keep Louisville Epi, the impact of trees and vegetation upon air quality. And yesterday, some of that conversation continued at the Global Sustainability Council's annual summit. That summit focused on climate change, the built environment, and sustainable housing. And again, huge turnout, lots of new folks being involved in the conversations. And again, really informative, thoughtful presentations on a really important topic. I know the district's work can sometimes seem a little bit inscrutable. We speak a different language. It's hyper-technical, as you've heard this morning from Mr. King. We use a lot of weird words. To help the community come into that conversation, because our work only gets done through public participation, we are kicking off another series of our Clearing the Air Workshop Series. This is an award-winning series of workshops where the community can come in and get an inside look at the district's work and have an opportunity to interact with us outside of a formal setting like a public hearing. Our scientists, engineers, officers, and other staff work hard to ensure healthy breathing here in Louisville. Want to make that part as transparent as we can and accessibility is a big topic of our daily work. Workshops are a great resource. They are virtual. They're free, open to the public. They're going to cover a range of air quality topics. October 24th at 6:00 PM, What's in the Air, APCD's Air Monitoring Network and Low-Cost Sensors. November 14th, Learning About the Air, Air Quality Data and Online Resources. December 12th, Air Quality and Your Health, Resources and Guidance. January 9th, State of the Air, What Is Louisville's Air Quality Like in 2023? Each of these workshops will start with a presentation by district staff and be followed by opportunity, opportunities for questions and a discussion. So we hope that many of you will join us in that. Please sign up and we'll look forward to seeing you there. You can register for workshops online and you can also find recordings of past workshops all the way back to 2018 on our website. Are there any questions about that from the board?
No.
So MSD odors are a large topic at the moment. Since August 1st, there have been more than 1,500 reports of odors that have been made to the district. These have been predominantly about sewer odors from MSD's operations of the Morse Forman Water Quality Treatment Plant and the collection system predominantly west of Ninth Street. Last month, I reported that MSD's August Odor Complaint Law, which listed about 76 reports made to MSD, did not include any reports from the Smell My City app. For September, MSD has listed over 600 complaints, including nearly 150 that were received with the Smell My City app. The district and MSD receive reports of sewer odors directly and automatically from Metro 311. MSD is also linked through a email group to receiving the Smell My City reports in real time, as is the district. These come into my inbox. I read them along with my staff. Any report of sewer odors that the district receives independently by phone or through, out of the web or email, we share with MSD so that action can be taken to reduce odors. We've also seen a fair number of reports of odors from MSD being made to the Kentucky Division for Air Quality, US EPA, and the National Response Center, which is typically used for emergency releases. When we receive these notices, I send them directly to MSD's Executive Director to unparent. As a follow-up to the completion of the odor control master plan for the Morse Forman Water Quality Treatment System and the collection system, which was required by this board, the district has purchased and is awaiting delivery of a hydrogen sulfide monitor to be installed at our Algonquin Parkway Air Monitoring Station. This is a fixed and continuous monitor, which is across from the Morse Forman Water Quality Treatment Center. And we've made arrangements to acquire a set of hydrogen sulfide sensors. And we've made arrangements to acquire a set of hydrogen sulfide sensors from the Kentucky Environment and Energy Cabinet's Compliance and Enforcement Program for use in field investigations. At this point, we've received word yesterday that those sensors, which had been sent off for calibration to manufacture, are now available for us to pick up. With our current staffing, it is challenging. Our staff, who typically respond to lengths of open burning, dust, and odor, consist of the supervisor. Because of the retirement of our long-term staff members earlier this summer, unfortunately, he went out this morning to respond to an odor complaint and was involved in an auto accident. So at this point, we have been asking our industrial compliance and our industrial permitting staff throughout this summer of reports to step in and take on that load. And I'm grateful that they have stepped up, gotten out in the field, and have been able to continue APCD's service as we onboard new employees. Our interest in adding these sensors and a monitor is in response to the fact that MSD has now completed the plan, which includes recommendations. Those need to be implemented. As they implement them, we'll want to be sure that they are actually protecting public health. At times, that can be due to exposure, perhaps to emissions of hydrogen sulfide. We want to rule that out, but we definitely understand and hear that this is a quality of life issue. So we'll talk to the board more about that next month, including our quality objectives and our requirements under EPA for acquiring data that will be provided to the air quality ACUS, air quality system, or to your CPA. We'll also report that data on our website. Are there any questions about that from the board?
I have a question. But you don't presently, until now, have any hydrogen sulfide monitors?
MSD is part of the work that they did to fill the control plan. They have...
They did.
They did, and they do. With respect to our Algonquin Parkway Air Monitoring Station, it currently has sulfur dioxide over.
I just wonder whether there's a strong correlation between hydrogen sulfide concentrations and reports of odors.
Odors are complex, especially sewer odors, and I'm sure that MSD can help provide additional All odors could... That's what makes odors. In terms of what's coming down the sewer system from humans, and it is human waste and other products that create the hydrogen sulfide when it continues to break down, there are other chemicals for captains, biols, that are very smelly and very low concentrations. So it's a very mixed mixture of volatile organic compounds, hydrogen sulfide, and other chemical components. So we're going to go ahead and get those monitors up and running. We'll add hydrogen sulfide sensor to our field work, evaluate the efficacy of using that within ambient... With that, that leads us to our presentation today. As I mentioned, I was asked by the Board of Health to fill them in on APCD's roles during emergency response, and APCD's Industrial Compliance Supervisor, Al Alp, is going to join me this morning with that presentation. Are you ready? Come on. Let me know when it's...
1:55.
Going to move pretty quickly through here, so if there's something of interest that you'd like me to expand on, please let me know, and I'll stop then. Matt, you've done an outstanding job today, so no rush, we're good. All right. So I know this is a little hard to see up here, but basically, the district is comprised, at this point, of four groups, five with our admin section. Our work is all interrelated. You'll start with air monitoring, where we see what's in the air for many sections. Enforcement and compliance is continued work in that program planning, where we take that air quality information, and we pass on rules and regulations that are then incorporated into the permit and compliance enforcement is taken to assure adherence to those permit terms and conditions. Excellent.
How many people do you have on the staff?
On paper, we have 60 physicians today, not Monday, because Monday's going to be a better day. We're currently running about 53 people. It's got some substantial vacancies, and we will be filling some positions in the near future, taking a little bit of time to adjust some to better serve our work. So we do operate a network of air monitoring stations across Jefferson County. There are five. They collect around 46 million data points each year. We're looking both at the National Ambient Air Quality Standards and Standards and Criteria of Pollutants. That's also how we report to folks through that air quality index. We had received an air quality alert earlier this summer, particularly during the Canadian wildfires. We also monitor for toxic air pollution and volatile organic compounds. We do that in near real time, both at Algonquin Parkway, which was the site of maximum exposure during the west Louisville air toxics study, and also at our Cannon's Lane Air Monitoring Station, which is our multi-millionth and core site for the state of Kentucky. Next slide, please. Air sensors are new and up-and-coming technology that can help the public and the district understand things in a different way. Our air monitoring network is built to give us long-term, continuous data, because our regulatory standards are geared that way. It's not mobile. These are stationary operations. They're in shelter. If you ever go up Cannon's Lane, you might see two new shelters, ones for our Chemical Assessment Monitoring. But air sensors are actually smaller, net portable, lower cost, and they're able to be deployed in a lot of different areas that a regulatory monitor can't. They don't give us quite the same information, but they're getting much better. Pictured here is our co-location shelter. If you have a personal sensor and you're interested in seeing how it gears up compared to our regulatory monitor, you can place it in the field right next to our monitor and compare trends. We have secured funding for an air sensor lending library. We'll share information with the board as soon as we have confirmation that our project has been approved from the DA. Next slide, please. So I'm going to focus on two different parts of our operation today. One is air pollution permitting. Because we're familiar with the sources of pollution here in Louisville, we receive their application, process that into a permit. We write the record-keeping reporting and monitoring that are necessary for that source to demonstrate compliance. And of course, then we bring that information in-house. We review it in our compliance process to be sure that those emissions are matched to the permit. So we have a tremendous amount of information in-house about what happens at a facility here in Louisville. With our risk management, I've been asked, DJ, to explain the votes.
Again, I'm DJ Alp, I'm the Industrial Compliance Group Supervisor, and I oversee the RMP for Jefferson County. So, and around 1999, the district accepted the designation of the Risk Management Program. And since then, we have administered it with the Emergency Management Agency, who performs the inspections and responds to any incidents that may occur. The district provides the regulation and oversight and enforcement of any additions that may occur. There are currently 17 sources in Jefferson County. Six of those are among refrigeration, so think about food distribution, food manufacturing sources mainly, and seven of them are chemical manufacturers. The rest are a variety of different sources. So Risk Management Program requires those companies to have prevention program to prevent chemical accidents, a response program to mitigate those accidents should they happen, and also to assess the hazards on a ongoing basis. Just to keep it brief, there are a variety of companies that can respond to their own incidents, maintaining their own response, teams on-site that are trained and equipped to respond, or some of them rely on local, which responders such as fire departments.
With that in mind, the district has retained delegation of the Risk Management Plan Program. We're only in the name of nine state or local programs in the nation that have retained delegations of this program. In the rest of the Commonwealth, US EPA is responsible for implementing this program. We do pay half the salary of that emergency management employee to be our boots on the ground, but with our specialized knowledge of facilities, including the permitting process, as well as the Risk Management Plan Program, which the board may remember, last year, you all strengthened that rule beyond the federal program by adding additional requirements for facilities here in Jefferson County. Those are places where we have special understanding in the event of an emergency release. The other places are in monitoring, where experts in Louisville's air quality and potential impacts that may occur. Next slide, please. So here in Louisville, there is a Hazardous Materials Ordinance. That's what guides what happens when there is a release of a reportable quantity or other release of a hazardous material that may impact human life and the environment. MSD serves as the administering agency for that. They also require a hazardous materials use and spill prevention control plan, release reporting and notice requirements, a hazardous chemical inventory reporting program, take enforcement, including several penalties, and have cost recovery for responding agencies. Next slide, or next slide, please. How the various agencies respond is actually laid out in the Louisville Emergency Management Operations Plan. I've got a link to it in the presentation. This will be up on our website. It's a little bit inside baseball. It's the sort of thing written in a completely different language than I'm used to, and so if you dig into it, it may not make sense to follow the back, but I will assure you that here in Louisville, those emergency responders are amazingly well-trained and well-planned professions. Next slide. Orary to that is the 2022 Louisville Metro Hazard Prevention Plan. This talks about all types of hazards that may occur here in Louisville, flooding, tornadoes, but also hazardous materials incidents. So it too lays out the respective roles of the various agencies. Next slide. Our work as air pollution professionals does not require us to be hazardous material certified responders. We are not first responders. Our folks are not trained for it. There are many others who are. Here in Louisville, they use an incident command approach. When an event happens at a facility, first people who usually arrive at the fire department. Fire departments, particularly those that serve Rubber Town hazardous materials, train. They serve as the incident commander. Their primary objective is to be sure that they have security and safety for the responders, the plant employees, the neighbors, and then property. Using that as their guiding rubric, they then decide what other agencies need to respond, whether that's going to be MSD, or another fire department, or public health and wellness. We'll talk about that here in just a second. Or perhaps, because of our specialized knowledge, if it's a facility-based issue, or in the case of that hazard operations plan, if there is a need to plan a evacuation route, then we may be called into the situation. Next slide. So again, in terms of those first responders, the urban fire department or suburban fire departments here in Louisville are specially trained hazmat technicians. They have additional training based on specific chemicals that may be located at different facilities. They're also specially equipped to handle hazardous material incidents. Slide. The same goes for the metropolitan sewer district, both in their role as the administering agency for the Louisville Metro Hazardous Materials Ordinance, and also just in their own responsibilities managing that sewer system. So if something goes down in the sewer system, they need to be able to address and react to what that could happen at their facilities. They too are specially trained. They are also able to do air monitoring and monitoring within the sewer system. Next slide, please. Emergency management. So these are the folks who are the facilitators for all that emergency response planning. As I said, we do pay half the salary for the emergency management employee to be our boots on the ground, particularly with respect to that Risk Management Plan Program. They too are specially trained hazardous materials technicians. During an emergency event, they coordinate over 95 agencies during disasters, so they have a really important support role, and they do a great job of that. Next slide, please. Public health and wellness. When there is a hazardous materials incident, public health and wellness, specially trained hazmat technicians, they do have additional training for incidents involving chemical, biological, and radioactive materials. They determine the health impact of the release to the community, assist responding agencies to ensure responders' safety. They are also able to utilize air monitoring, and they do so, and other equipment to determine the material released and to make a hazard assessment. They are also able to order the cleanup of a hazardous materials incident. Next slide, please. They have tools that are very different from our regulatory air monitors. These are sensor-like, but they are also very capable of determining in the field if there is a hazard to human health. Next slide, please. Recently, you may have become aware of a couple of hazardous materials incidents. This is one from back in March of last year. This was a release from a facility to the sewer system, then spread through a neighborhood where they have a combined stormwater sewer system, and the neighbors on the other side of the railroad track were actually the first to recognize that an event had happened at a facility. With a facility like this, APCD's role is specialized. We permit this facility and where things are located, because we permitted operational equipment where things are stored. But in this case, MSD, Public Health and Wellness, and Louisville Metro Emergency Management responded about the same time we had deployed one of our compliance officers to the field to investigate. Given that they called this hazardous materials incident, we recalled our employee, because they are not hazardous materials trained. Next slide, please. I think many of us have heard about the Applegate Lane situation. Back in July, Louisville Metro Police executed a search warrant and found the house stuck with a number of chemical substances. That's been an interesting experience for a lot of us. This isn't the type of situation where we have specialized facility information, but because we have specialized air quality information and also our expertise with monitoring, we were brought in to consult in the early part of this investigation. Since then, US EPA, also in that chain of command and pulling in all the different resources, US EPA and the Kentucky Emergency Response Branch have responded and subsequently determined that taking the building apart as opposed to burning it is now the best course of action. If you go to Metro Government's Applegate Lane webpage, there's a link at the top that will take you to US EPA's webpage for the incident. I really encourage everyone to take a look at that. It has live air monitoring on it. You can see that in real time. It's using field sensors rather than monitors, so they're a little different, but the theory is the same. It also has a tremendous amount of information and a very easy to reform. So again, I'm kind of blown away at their capabilities. They are picking the house apart, piece... They are picking the house apart piece by piece at this point. Are there any questions about Applegate Lane?
I was really disappointed when they said they weren't going to burn that house down. I'm sure a lot of people were, I just couldn't understand the rationale, wouldn't burn a house down.
So there is another incident that occurred in California, I think in 2012, it's in Escondido County.
They burned the house down?
They did, it was a very similar situation, and that was the method they chose. In this case, US EPA has a specialized contractor, and they were able to determine that it would be better, in this case, to take it down in this manner. That doesn't mean it's easy.
Right.
Go to EPA's website.
They burned a house down in a neighborhood with people living there.
The mobilization, you know, to do what they're doing, it's impressive. All I can say is
What I'm saying is they burned it this way instead of burning it down, really.
So I've got one more slide, and end on a positive note. So many folks are familiar with the term brownfield, it's a place where contamination may have been placed in the ground, or potential for that contamination to exist. There is a site nearby, it's just on the other side of the railroad tracks here, that's the rodeo property from 1919 to 1940s, it was used for chemical manufacturing, it was in operation through 1994, and since then has been fallow. In a brownfield situation, the Kentucky Division for Waste Management is the regulating authority, and so they have approved and evaluated the site in order to bring it back up to standards that are protective for public health and for the development goals of the project. Here, there are some slightly elevated groundwater contaminants, but it's primarily soil contaminants. APCD's role in this really is outside of the property. We're going to, as they do, the very large excavation process to dig out the contaminated soils. We're going to be minding to be sure that they do not violate our dust or odor rules, and I'll say odor here. They have great plans in place, good work practice standards to manage the dust and the odor. They do have some odor suppression that they can do, but a couple of the constituents that are there are smelling napthaline, which will smell like mothballs, and xylene, which will smell like markers. So this is a short-term project, there may be some odors, we will work with the contractor to be sure that those odors are as limited as they can and should be. There is onsite monitoring that's being done in the perimeter of the fence line of particulate matter and volatile organic compounds. So we look forward to this property being put back into productive use. I think that project will end sometime in December, and until then, on a daily basis, we'll just add it to our routine surveillance and respond to any concerns that we hear. Any questions? That's the end.
Thank you for that day, thank you for that day with the emergency response, appreciated. Any questions from board members? Well, moving a little, running a little bit behind. Real quick, are there any questions regarding our quality data that has been submitted, direct from to the board members? No questions? No, our toxic monitoring report was, you have read for this month. What about the enforcement status report, any questions, comments regarding that report? Here in Illinois? Accession mission report? Complaint investigation status summary, any questions, comments regarding that report? At the license of the line tariff for filling our party report? If not, adjourn the meeting, the next board meeting is Wednesday, November the 15th. Thank you for your attendance, and looking forward to seeing everyone back here next month.